Good evening, welcome to the February 5th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Thank you. Just a reminder, there are four exits in the room, two in the back and two in the front. So, just wanted to remind everyone of that. My new addition to my reading glasses. I don't like to admit that, but... This evening, we are starting our meeting with a special introduction of our final candidate for the new Superintendent of Schools of our Rockville Center School District. We have an exciting evening ahead of us, and we would like to start by reviewing the process that led us to where we are today. It began with the announcement of the retirement of Dr. William Johnson, our Superintendent of Schools for the past thirty-four years. Little emotional. As this was going to be an unprecedented process, the Board spent an appreciable amount of time thinking about all of the aspects, this important responsibility, especially how to involve our community in this generational change. The Board began by interviewing search firms and ultimately chose HYA Hazard Young ATEA Associates. HYA began the search by having Consultant Debbie Raisies present at a Board of Education meeting on September 17th, 2019, to discuss how the search process would take place. HYA consultants had held focus groups and personal interviews with one hundred and thirty-five school, community, personnel, parents, and student interviews. They also had five hundred and twenty-one community members respond to written online survey. From the information gathered, a written leadership profile was created and used as a guide for what the community and staff of our Rockville Center School District were looking for in a new superintendent. At our November 6th, 2019 Board of Education meeting, search consultant Debbie Raisies presented the leadership profile. This profile guided potential applicants and recruits and was used to create focused interview questions for candidates. The process for superintendent was a confidential one, allowing for top-quality candidates to apply without risk of their current employee or community finding out that they were exploring outside opportunities. A pool of fifty candidates applied for the position. After initial screening, the Board of Education held several interviews and follow-up interviews with multiple candidates, along with reference and background checks, before unanimously agreeing to offer the position to Mr. Chang. A site visit was also conducted to hear directly from staff and administration members in Summit. This was a comprehensive process that took over five months to complete. Tonight, we are thrilled to have the opportunity to introduce the community to our final candidate for the position of the Superintendent of Schools for our Rockville Center School District. It is now my pleasure to turn it over to Board President Tara Hackett, who will make this special introduction.
Good evening. It's an honor and privilege to stand before you tonight as Board President. On behalf of the entire Board, we thank you for your patience while we have taken the unprecedented journey of hiring a Superintendent for our exemplary school district. I'd like to thank HYA associates, specifically Debbie Raisies and Judy Ferguson, for professionally guiding us through our process with integrity. I'd also like to thank our Board members for their continued hard work and dedication to the children of Rockville Center. We are all very familiar with the story of Rockville Center School District and Dr. Johnson's incredible legacy, working in our district for forty years, thirty-four of which he has served as Superintendent. We are very fortunate to still have him as our leader through the end of this school year and look forward to the work we will continue to do together. Of course, we would never miss the opportunity to say thank you to Dr. Johnson for all he has afforded the children of our great community over the past four decades, so thank you. You can imagine how seriously we have taken the Board's responsibility of selecting his successor. As Susan laid out for you all, we've spent a significant amount of time on the process through this point, but our job is now only half-complete. The remaining portion is equally important and starts tonight. We commence by introducing our selection of Superintendent, Mr. Jun Chang, who yesterday spent his first day in central administration, meeting some of our key players. In the months ahead, the Board and Mr. Chang will mutually plan out a transition strategy to make July 1st, 2020 not only the first day of his term, but a smooth and successful start for the future of our district. We will be planning more sit-down meetings in these months, in addition to meet and greet opportunities for the community to engage directly with Mr. Chang. By now, you've likely read our letter to the district or the articles written. You've undoubtedly Googled "Mr. Jun Chang," and I know you have. You might have read that Mr. Chang, at his heart, is an educator. He started his career as a teacher. He was a multi-sport coach, football, basketball, track, wrestling. He then moved into administration as an Assistant Principal, Director of Curriculum, and eventually Superintendent of Schools of the Summit School District, widely renowned as the premier school district in New Jersey. Summit is a district that mirrors Rockville Center in many ways, with four thousand students, five elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school. In addition, they have two primary centers. Mr. Chang has also proudly served as a Holocaust Education Program Director, an adjunct college professor, and a speaker specializing in important topics such as multiculturalism and diversity. He holds a Bachelor's Degree in English, a Master's Degree in Education, and an MBA from Columbia University. While Superintendent, he has enjoyed a proven track record of success, including increasing student access to preferred programs by thirty-four percent, improved advanced placement offering by thirty-six point eight percent, and achieved a forty-six percent increase in the number of students attending the top one hundred ranked universities. His strides taken in the areas of communications, technology, special education, data analytics, and finances helped Summit to gain national recognition and excellence. The Board is confident that all of his leadership abilities and skills are one hundred percent transferable to our great school district and will keep Rockville Center as the lighthouse district it has always been, while continuing to move us into an exciting new generation of education. Now, I'd like to share the information you couldn't have been able to read about. Who is Mr. Jun Chang as a person and as a leader? These are words taken directly from the mouths of the many wonderful people from Summit and his past work environments that we are most proud to share. Here are a few highlights, and keep in mind, these are direct quotes. "Jun is a winner, a mentor, an idol. He knows the right way to move the needle, is forward-thinking and vision-driven. He's an intellect, has a deep appreciation for knowledge, likes empowering people, recognizes ability and helps people to rise up, including himself, to be better. Jun is caring, kind, makes every space psychologically safe, is supportive, collaborative, trustworthy, and is a man of integrity. He is strategic, progressive, a life learner, leads by listening and digesting, and is focused on the future. He brings stability, purpose, innovation, and inclusivity to every table. First and foremost, he encourages everyone to make decisions that are for the children, and kids love him." We heard that many times, and that's what we're here for, is it not? It's time for me to turn it over and let this amazing person speak for himself. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rockville Center's next Superintendent, Mr. Jun Chang.
Good evening, everyone. First, may I please tell the Board that I'm humbled and grateful for the opportunity, and the process was one that was most unique and very close in terms of figuring out who we both were, and I really appreciated that throughout the process. I want to be able to thank the Rockville Center community for coming out tonight and welcoming me. I've gotten a lot of words of encouragement, telling me about the great district that we have, the great support systems that we have. I myself have had some great conversations over the last couple of days with the principals, some of the teaching staff, as well as the cabinet level, the Assistant Superintendents. I can't tell you how lucky it is for me to actually walk into a place where you've had someone in leadership for thirty-four years. Dr. Johnson has laid a great foundation and has provided many traditions. A lot of those traditions, I hope that I will be able to embrace and they will be able to embrace me as well. I come to Rockville Center because we care for one thing: we care about the success of our students. We care about the well-being of our students. That's my number-one priority, and I hope to be able to bring that to fruition by working together with the Board, the administration, the principals, and the teaching staff. It's about coming together as one, working together for one goal. We may have different thoughts, we may have different visions and different paths to things, but at the end of the day, if we can make sure we get to student success where they have good well-being and well-roundedness as they move forward, then we've done our job, and that will be my focus coming in. And the biggest focus of all will be to listen and to learn, because you have great resources, great experience, great knowledge, and great passion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. I am thrilled to be here, along with my fellow Board members and all of you, as we welcome Mr. Chang to our district. Among the many factors that made Mr. Chang such an appealing candidate is his evident commitment to ongoing reflection and forward-thinking. We will all surely benefit from his presence, most of all our students, for our students are in fact the reason we are all here. Our shared commitment to their growth continues as we enter this next chapter. At this time, I would like to welcome up our Student Representative for the evening, President of Student Government, Larissa Lano, to present Mr. Chang with his own Southside High School Cyclones wear.
I've been lucky enough to attend the Rockville Center School District since kindergarten under Dr. Johnson's supervision, and I'm excited for the future of it as I continue to live in Rockville Center and watch as kids grow up here under Dr. Chang's lead. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Mr. Chang. This is a very exciting evening. As always already been said, students is our focus, students are our focus.
I went to school.
Our students are our focus, how's that? It has been said that children who are successful have parents who are interested and involved. I believe that schools that are successful have strong PTAs, because strong PTAs are made of strong and involved parents. Parents are our partners. Our students benefit when we all work together. All of us who sit on this Board got our start in PTA. All of us were PTA Presidents. Our PTAs come together under one umbrella, they create a council. Our Council Presidents, Emma Travers and Janet Gruner, are here to welcome Mr. Chang.
Good evening, everybody. So, my name is Emma Travers, and this is Janet Gruner, and we are the PTA Council of Rockville Center Co-Presidents. The PTAs do a lot of really good work in this school district, and I'm proud to work with them. And I know a lot of people here got their start in PTA, and I see a lot of PTA in the room, which is really fantastic. Some of you may then know that this is the time of year when we start recruiting members to come and serve on our executive boards. Now, contrary to what some of you may think, and this came as a huge shock to me, being a PTA President is not actually the coolest thing in the world to do, and sometimes we have real difficulty in persuading people to take on what can be a thankless task. The one thing that we've always had as a persuader is that every month, Dr. Johnson sits down at the table in the Executive Boardroom with the PTA Presidents, and he tells us what's going on in the district, what's happening, and he educates us as to what is going on in our own schools. I know I have benefited tremendously from this, and I know a lot of people here have also benefited from it, so we thank you, Dr. Johnson, for doing that, because it has been a wonderful thing for us all. So then, it's with great excitement, satisfaction, that I can announce that Mr. Chang has agreed to honor that tradition. And I would go so far as to say that he might be even looking forward to hanging out with the cool moms. And so, on behalf of the Rockville Center Council of PTAs and all the individual units who are represented here tonight, I would like to welcome you to our district. I know that we're going to see some great changes in our future, but I'm thrilled that we're going to continue to work together and sit together around that table. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Mr. Chang. I'd like to introduce Frank Van Zant. He is the President of our Teachers' Union. It's a five-hundred-member-strong unit. The teachers are the backbone of our schools. They are the reason that our children move from kindergarten through high school and achieve in college. They're, you know, the most, one of the most important factors in our school, and Mr. Van Zant represents them, and he'd like to welcome you.
Thirty-four years ago, when Dr. Johnson was a rookie Superintendent, I was a rookie schoolteacher. Our careers have dovetailed, and I honor Dr. Johnson for his vision and his service. Our new Superintendent, Mr. Chang, is no rookie. In a welcoming, lighthearted spirit, I will share with you that in one day, we've already established common ground and a disagreement. Apparently, Mr. Chang is a baseball fan. However, he roots for the Yankees. Thirty-four years, I thought I could get away from that. As we begin together, together with a Board that is enthusiastic and cares, I do believe that we share these most important principles: a passion for teaching and learning, and a love for guiding kids to elevated levels of knowing. I welcome Mr. Chang.
Before I introduce Dr. Friling and the Chamber Singers, let me thank all of these folks: our district administration under Dr. Johnson's leadership, our Board of Education for continually supporting the arts, and all of our programs with budgets, facilities, their presence, and hard work. I know that the process that brought us to tonight has been arduous and long, so I thank you all. Mr. Chang, welcome. Yesterday, I enjoyed the conversation you had with all of my colleagues. I hope we made you feel welcome, but tonight, our students want to welcome you in true Rockville Center style, by sharing their musical artistry and joy with you. Dr. Doreen Friling is both an artist and a scholar. She's a warm and caring human being who manages to communicate her love and care to our high schoolers. I'll turn the mic over to Professor Friling, so she can tell you a bit about the song the Chamber Singers will dedicate to you.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Zohar, for your continued support and leadership. Several of our members of the Chamber Singers are here tonight to help musically welcome Mr. Chang to the Rockville Center Schools. We are honored to be part of your first impression of the wonderful music program here. Since we are partway into our all-district concert preparation and not quite ready to showcase that repertoire, we've had to reach back into our fall program to find something appropriate to welcome you with tonight. This has been a bit of a challenge, since one of our pieces was an Indian Raga with no text. Another was about overcoming hardships, not really how we want to welcome you here. And one of our favorites is "You're a Mean One, Mr. Grinch," which also doesn't really strike the right tone. So instead, we will sing for you a Puerto Rican carol for which, for our context tonight, fits quite nicely. "Abrame la puerta" means "Open the Doors."
[singing]
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 [inaudible]
We're going to have meeting greets in the future. Thank you for, thank you for that. Yes, thank you for that. We appreciate it. And just by being here, you are welcoming him. We are going to have a reception outside. We're going to break from the meeting before we go into our budget presentation, so hopefully you can shake hands with Mr. Chang and get to know him a little bit, and then we're going to return here to finish the rest of our meeting. So, thank you so much, and we'll see you in a little bit. Thank you, Dr. Friling. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to get, we're going to continue our meeting. We have a proposed 2020-2021 budget.
My job tonight is really turn it over to Robert, but nevertheless, I just want to make a few comments. You know, we begin this process almost short, one month after the school begins, sometime in October, with Mr. Bartels spending a good deal of time working with our administrative team, mostly the principals and directors, in constructing an expenditure plan which takes place during the month of October, November, and December. We live in a rather strange kind of environment right now, because there was a time when we used to create a budget and we'd have to go out and sell it to the community and ask them to in fact approve what it was that we were doing. We don't do that anymore. I mean, even though we go for a vote, the vote is kind of a vote on our tax levy. Our expenditure plan, although that's really what people are voting on, is capped at one point eight one, plus a growth factor, plus whatever capital we put into it. And so consequently, the discussions about budget end very quickly. We don't need to spend a great deal of time trying to figure out what the expenditure plan will look like, and at the end of the day, we will be going to the voters very shortly with what we think is a plan that will take us from this year into next, essentially preserving all of the services that we provide for our children here in Rockville Center, with essentially the same staffing patterns that we have this year into next. And so, on that note, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Bartels, and he will give us kind of an overall of what the budget will be looking like in the upcoming weeks and months. Mr. Bartels.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We are back at that time again, time of year. Not on? How about now? Better? Better? Okay. It's that time of year again, we're going through the budget for the first time with the public. What I'd like to do tonight is kind of just go through some of the process of the budget, go through some of our dates, and some budget basics, before we really get into a more detailed discussion of the budget. So, for tonight, we're going to go through a budget schedule, and talk a little bit about some of the numbers that we have with the budget, that the budget works into in terms of goals for the school district and where we're going. The process, some budget basics. I'll talk about transparency, financial condition of the school district, where we are right now, some of the controls we put on the budget, how we were going to go through and review the budget, and what kind of format we're going to have. So, to begin with, we have a number of budget work sessions that we're going to have throughout the year: February 5th, 25th, March 4th, 18th, and April 2nd. On April 21st, we will have a preliminary budget hearing. That is the last time that the district will have to change the budget before it has to be finalized for a budget vote. On May 6th, we have a budget hearing, which is just a requirement from the state. We cannot change the budget at that time, and it will culminate in a, the budget vote and Board election, which will be on May 19th. So, we're going to go through these dates, I think at each of our budget work sessions, just to kind of keep pace of where we are. To begin with, just a little description of the district. We're about thirty-six hundred students. We have five elementary schools, which go kindergarten to fifth grade. We have one middle school and one high school, and we have an alternative program for our high school. Our graduation rates are some of the tops in the state. We have ninety-nine percent of our students graduate with a Regents diploma, ninety percent with an advanced designation, and we have forty-three percent of our students actually graduate with a full IB diploma. We also work hard with all of our students with disabilities, so even all of our students with disabilities still come in with a Regents graduation rate of ninety percent, advanced designation of sixty-two percent, and six percent of students with disabilities do come in with a full IB diploma. The district is considered a fairly wealthy district in New York State. Our combined wealth ratio, which is a combination of the valuation of the property in the district and the total gross income of the district, comes out to one point six. New York State averages one point zero. The reason that's important is that plays a factor in many of the aid percentages that we get from the state on our different forms of state aid. So, by being considered a wealthy district, we get a smaller percentage of some of the expenditures that we have for the school districts that aid is given to us on from the state, such as BOSI's expenditures, transportation, and special education costs. the state, such as BOSI's expenditures, transportation, and special education costs. Our free and reduced-priced lunch percentage is about 12%. So we do have a number of students with difficulty affording some of the programs that we have. So we do have free and reduced-priced lunch for those students. Our limited English proficiency is only about 2.23%. So those are students who are having difficulty with English as their language. And our special education classification rate is 14.4%. That's a total percentage of students in the district who have some classification of special education. The way we develop the budget each year really starts in each of the buildings. All of our administrators put together their budget requests for the following year. They do it in kind of three pieces. They do the supplies and services, which is really the items that show up within their individual budgets for their buildings. They'll provide some requests for equipment or capital projects. That information comes in and will go under Facilities Budget, as those are higher dollar figures, or our capital projects are transferred to Capital Line, which is towards the back of the budget for different capital projects we have throughout the district. And the third item is personnel requests. So we meet with our staff, we talk about changes due to enrollments or programs, and decide what we need going forward for the new year. All of these are reviewed by myself with all of the administrators to go over their budgets and their recommendations, so that I will then put everything into a budget with my staff. We then review that with the superintendent and the assistant superintendents, kind of just look at that as a whole, and we finalize a budget for, finalize a proposed budget to present to the board and to the community. And that's what we'll be going through with these different work sessions that we have. With each different work session, the budget can be fine-tuned as more information becomes available. So depending on enrollments, maybe for kindergarten or in different programs, we may hear of retirements, we have different things that happen at CSC meetings where different services are required, replacements are needed. So as we go through the spring, we'll fine-tune that budget for the following year. Again, when we finish with the budget work sessions, we have the preliminary budget hearing, the last chance to change the budget, preceded with an informational budget hearing and the budget vote and board election. Just some budget basics. Each year, we have to balance our budget. So whatever we're planning on spending, we have to have the revenues to support. Revenues that we are looking at percentage-wise typically most is, comes from the tax levy. As Dr. Johnson said, that's determined through the tax cap, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a couple of slides. The rest of our revenue is broken down in a few ways. The next largest part is state aid. Get a little over 10% in state aid. And then the other three sources, pretty similar. Our fund balance makes up about 2.7% of the budget. We have tuitions with our Core and our RISE program. That's a program for special ed students within the district. We also bring in students from outside the district into those programs, and those students, those districts pay us a tuition for those students coming in. So the Core program, we've run for a number of years. The RISE program is kind of a recent addition, but it's been kind of thriving in our district. And last, we have local revenue. Local revenue is any other source of income that we have in the district. So that would be programs like Project Great, Adult Education, Summer Program, any investments that we have, interest earnings, different items like that. So that makes up the total source of our revenues, and whatever we have there, that's all we can spend. On the expenditure side, we break it up into three different categories, and these categories are determined by the state. So 78.2%, close to 80% of the entire budget goes to our program. That's the instructional programs within the district. About 13% is broken out into what the state classifies as a capital portion. That is capital projects that we have, debt service, and our facilities costs. So it'll be utilities, the costs of the custodial staff and running our buildings. Then we have, the last piece is the administration portion, which is about 8.8% of the budget, and that's all of the other administrative pieces that would fit in. So that includes things like transportation, central office administration, accounting, payroll, and other administrative functions, all of our insurance, for example. This is kind of what Dr. Johnson was talking about earlier. Before we had the tax cap, what happened was we would determine a budget, have some discussions, decide what we would need, what we would want to put forward into the future. We would subtract out our state aid, subtract out the local revenues that we have, subtract out any use of reserve, and the balance would be the tax levy. So that tax levy could increase by 1% or it could increase by 10%. It was a matter of what the board decided the community would be comfortable with and what we really needed to add within the district. After the advent of the tax cap, that entire piece has changed. So now, what happens is you kind of work backwards. We start by determining what the tax levy is, and that's determined by the tax cap. We then add our state aid, we add our local revenues and the use of reserves, and then that's the maximum budget we have. So that's, whatever that number is, that's the maximum. So we can't go over that. If we need to add something that would go over that, we'd have to cut something else. The way they determine the tax cap, most people hear about it as the 2% increase, 2% being the tax cap. That is partially true. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, for next year, that quote 2% number is going to be 1.8%. That is based on the Consumer Price Index increase over the past year. We've had a few years where that number has been 2%, but we've also had years where it was 0.1%. So that number can change dramatically and affect dramatically the amount of money that the district is able to increase the tax base by. So it's a fairly complicated formula, the tax cap. You really start with last year's tax levy. You work in the increase in the Consumer Price Index. There's a growth factor. The growth factor is based on how much new construction there is within the district. In Rockville Center, there's really not a lot of new construction going on. Everything is pretty much developed. So even if a building is renovated, it's not considered new construction. Then there are different exclusions that are taken. So the state requires us to exclude pilot payments. So we've had discussion, how do pilot payments impact the school district? It's really considered another source of revenue. So if, we've had Avalon Bay has been, I guess, the main one recently. So if we, when those numbers that we get increase, so we get another $100,000 from Avalon Bay in pilot payments, that number comes off of how much we can increase the tax levy by.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Can you explain what a pilot?
Pilot, I'm sorry. Pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. That's something that's granted by either Nassau County or Hempstead Industrial Development Agency for a property to come off the tax rolls and make some sort of a payment supposedly in some fashion related to what they would be paying in taxes, but this way they would have a kind of a set amount each year, could be for 15 years, could be for 20 years.
In Rockville Center, where do we deal with something like that?
In Rockville Center, we have Avalon Bay. It's mostly apartments. There are a couple of other apartment complexes in town that provide us with pilot payments. But the largest one right now is Avalon Bay.
I'm sorry, can you quickly explain like that's how long of a program it is? We get reduced rates for taxes. It's negotiated through the town of Hempstead typically?
Right, typically. It typically goes 15 to 20 years. Once that is finished, many, many times they'll apply for, to continue those exemptions. If not, it would go back onto the tax rolls at an approximate, approximately the same rate as what they were paying in these pilot payments. The problem with that is that when they go on the tax rolls, those are not residential properties. They're usually apartments, so they don't impact the same class of taxpayer the same way. So it benefits other taxpayers in the same class, so other apartment buildings that are paying taxes would end up seeing more of a reduction. It doesn't have that same effect on Class 1 homeowners because they're going into a different classification of property. So while they may be paying the same amount, it doesn't help us. Where it helps us is when it comes off, that becomes a reduction in our pilot payment. So based on the tax cap formula, it would allow us to increase the tax levy a little bit more to make up for the loss of the pilot payments.
Thank you.
In addition to the pilot payment exclusion, there is an exclusion for capital projects. So all of our capital expenditures, if we have a specific capital projects, we have, we have a line in the budget for a transfer to capital for different projects that we plan on doing in the coming year. We also have debt service from bond issues. So those are all exclusions. What is also an exclusion is the building aid that we get on those capital projects. So any capital projects that we apply for through the state, we get building aid on, that revenue is offset along with the expenditures in this tax cap formula. So it's a fairly lengthy formula, lots of add-ons and deducts. The number that it turns out to be, it's not necessarily 2%, it's not necessarily the 1.8%, which was the increase in CPI. Our number, I haven't finalized it yet, but it probably will be somewhere around 2% for this year. But we've had numbers up around 4%, we've had numbers down under 1%. And each district is different. So as our increase may be 2%, you could see a tax cap for another district of 4% if they have a lot more capital projects going on than we do. If they have capital projects coming off of their rolls or less debt service, you might see a, you know, half a percent or a 1% tax cap for another district. So it's very difficult to compare districts, you know, one to another when you just look at the tax cap because of this formula. Transparency. Over the years, we've continued to place more and more documents online. So we have these budget workshops. We try to go into detail tonight, but in future budget workshops, we'll have the detail on the budget. We'll be putting all of our budget documents online. We have our financial statements online, not only for the past fiscal year, our fiscal year ends June 30th. So the latest one on there will be dated June 30th, 2019. But we have the last five or six years of financial statements online, so anybody can go back and kind of see how the district has been doing financially. We have our independent audit report, which is put on the website. Our full line-by-line budgets, both the ones that we're going to be working on this year and our prior years, again, all online. Each year, we mail a budget brochure to all of residents. We try, once we come to conclusion at that preliminary budget hearing, we put a brochure together to try to talk about the budget, some of the changes, and outline them in summary format for our residents, and we send that out. We have a budget notice, which is a state requirement. It's called a six-day notice that has to be mailed a certain period of time before the budget. We have PTA presentations. So we don't just ask everybody to come to our meetings during the spring. When we pretty much finish with the budget, we'll go out to the different PTA meetings. Usually, one or two board members, one or two administrators go out to each building and do a presentation to each of the PTAs on the budgets and trying to explain that, answer questions. We have what's called a three-part budget. That was the dollar bill I showed you before, where our budget is broken up according to the state. They want us to break it up into a program budget, a capital budget, and an administrative So we do that. You can kind of compare those district by district, I guess, is one of the reasons I want you to do that. And the last thing I have on here is school funding transparency. This is something new that was put in place for Rockville Center and the majority of New York State school districts for the 1920 school year. What that does is tries to more closely break out the budget in terms of buildings. So you can match your expenses from Culver to Watson to Riverside. The difficulty there in trying to do those calculations or trying to match those budgets is, you know, all buildings are not the same. There's different staffing levels in different, in each building. We have, we have a Core program in one of our elementary schools, we have a RISE program in a different one, so there's more special ed needs in some schools rather than others. So it's very difficult to make those comparisons, but we do put that together, and we'll basically come down to a how many dollars per student we spend at each building. But for the most part, they're pretty close. You might see some slight variations, but they're pretty similar from building to building at the elementary level. Financial condition of the school district, we're actually in good shape. We manage our fund balance year to year. We use our reserves to maintain our programs. We have a retirement system reserve, which we continue to use year after year. That helps us maintain our regular budget lines without having any large increases or decreases. We utilize it to pick up some of our capital projects if we need to. We have a debt service reserve that we've used. We have a very strong bond rating. One of the things we found last year was we found ourselves on a, on a list of, for fiscal stress last year. The reason for that, the biggest reason for that had to do with an increase in our short-term cash borrowings. And the reason we increased it a year or two before was because we had the large bond issue for the addition of the high school. We had a lot of cash flow, so we had reduced our short-term borrowings because we had more cash on hand. We had increased that number, and that kind of triggered a large, according to our point system, a large negative factor. So that was really the reason that we ended up on that list for fiscal stress. This year, they came out with it a couple of weeks ago. We are not on that list. We didn't expect to be on that list. Our short-term cash borrowing has been pretty much the same for the last couple of years, so we had no points assigned in that category. So we're in good shape. Use Moody's Rating, the last one we have was February 4th, 2019. We'll probably be getting another one shortly. We have very strong rating at AA2, which is the second highest rating. You only have AAA and AA1, which are higher. That AA2 rating exceeds a median rating for the median rating of school districts nationwide. I just pulled a couple of comments from the, from the Moody's rating sheet for Rockville Center, and indicated that the financial position of the district is healthy overall, and Rockville Center has very high-quality credit position. So I just, I know we had that issue with the fiscal stress. I want to just, you know, reinforce that we are not, you know, we're not having fiscal issues. We don't have a large fund balance, but we've been running that way for many years, and we've been in good shape. Thank you, Jeff. We try to continue to replenish our reserves when possible. Each year, when I, when I put the budget together, I try to plan for a fund balance of $2.8 million. Some of you have been here a while, may have heard me use that number. What that means is between under-expending the budget and revenues higher than what we budget, I hope to come up with $2.8 million. I take that $2.8 million and I add it to the following year's budget as part of the revenue source. revenue source, which you had seen in the prior slide, which is the 2.7 percent. Each year, at the end of the year, we look at that number. What is that? How close did that $2.8 million did we come in at? If we come in at $3 million, we've got another $200,000 that we can add back to our reserves to help replenish that. If I come back in at $2.7 million, that means we had to go into our reserves by $100,000. So last year, we were able to increase our reserves slightly. This year, we're going to have a, a good year. We'll, we'll be able to replenish our reserves again for this year. So I think we're in a, in a strong position. When we get into the budget numbers, we're in very good shape this year. We're not going to be having big discussions about cuts or changes or things like that. We'll have discussion about what programs are going to be in the budget, but we're, we're in good shape. We're not going to be discussing any, any big cuts. Fund balance. As part of our overall fund balance, we're, the state allows each school district to have four percent of undesignated funds in their fund balance. We are at about three percent. Most districts are at about four percent. And just in a general percentage, most districts in New York State carry an overall fund balance of about 20 percent. Our number is closer to 10. So we do have a smaller overall fund balance, but as I said, we've been working with that for a number of years, and, and we've been able to keep that in good shape, so. And what that does is we don't have to overburden the tax levy, you know, from year to year. So, you know, we keep a good, tight rein on that. Some of the things that we do to control the budget, as I just mentioned, we, we manage the reserves. Each year, we bargain with different bargaining units, depending on which ones are coming up. We'll have usually three, four, or five-year contracts with our different bargaining units. And each one of those bargaining units has been great. We've explained to them the issue ever since we had the tax cap, that we cannot continue as a district if we exceed, if the cost of their contracts exceed two percent. So that's what we work with when we go into negotiations. So basically, however we increase, if we're going to increase salaries by three percent, then there's got to be some give-back someplace else, whether it's in benefits, whether it's in work, how we're doing certain things. So that's, that's always been a key negotiating point going forward, so. But our, and our staff understand that and have been great in working with us to, to stay within that, which has allowed us to continue most of our programs year to year. Competitive bidding state contracts. We're, we're part of a number of competitive bids. We're in the middle of one right now, a new one for special education services. We take part in state contracts, Nassau County contracts, BOSI's contracts. So we do anything we can to find the best price for a particular item or service. We do different consortiums. We, we purchase with, with groups of people. So we have our facilities group works with several different school districts to purchase different custodial items. So in addition to these other state contracts we have, there are some unique items that, you know, some of us have locally, and we go out separately through consortiums to try to purchase on scale and, and pick up some savings that way, and that works out really well. So we, we do a lot of that coordinated purchasing. We try to delay a lot of purchases to the second half of the year. A lot of times, we'll look at our budgets. Some of the items not necessarily, not necessary for the first half of the year. We try to have our principals try to go through, make sure they utilize whatever they have in the building until they absolutely have to purchase things. The money is there if they need it, but we try to delay them. The more we get to delay them, the less they find they need to purchase, and we end up having money left over at the end of the year. So that's one way we, we save some money. Then we look for other things to try to save money. We had done an energy performance contract. What that was is a vendor that came in, they're able to make certain capital improvements, and they're all paid for through the energy savings that were generated through those, through those capital improvements. And that's something that we had to work with the state on. The company had to come in, do a financial analysis, and guarantee that we would save money. So we haven't done that in a number of years. It may be something we look at again. But again, just different things that we do to try to cut back, try to keep our costs down. As far as how we review the budget, we typically do a line-by-line budget in a format which is required by the state. You'll see, when we get through to budgets, there are four different pieces of a budget code, actually five. The first one is not on here, which is really the fund, but everything we talk about is our general fund, and that's what is voted on. So then we have the function, which is the functional area, whether it's business office, instructional office, guidance. We have the object, which is the type of expense. That defines whether it's a salary item, equipment item, or supplies. We have a location, so we can determine what building that budget is assigned to. And we have a program where we try to separate out math, ELA, science, if it's a project-grade program, if it's a community education program. So we try to break it out in a number of different ways, so we can continue to look at the budget in, in a lot of different ways. But that is the, the main way that the state asks us to break out the budget. And again, we have more codes this year than we've had in prior years. Fortunately, this year, when we do the budget presentation, we have prior year actuals, current year budget, and the projected year's budget. So when we look at budget to budget for this year to next year, a lot of those building codes will match up, but we're still one year out of those changes into the building codes. So if we look at our staffing codes for teacher aides, for example, teacher aides used to always be in one budget code because they move around so much, there's so much changeover, they were all in one code. Now, with these new requirements, we had to break them down by building. So when you look at the prior years, you're not going to see any actuals. You'll see last year's budget to budget. So when we did it for this year, there was really nothing to compare it to. Now, at least, we'll have the budget to compare it to. So we have one more year before we're going to have a clear, you know, comparison year to year. And lastly, we end up with, when we get closer to the budget, we get finalized it, we're going to have an explanation of budget document. That is a combination of a number of different requirements from the state. It starts with our budget. We have the school report card in there. We have something called a property tax report card. We have our six-day notice. We'll have administrative salary disclosure, another requirement that we have for the state. So there's a number of different pieces that will all go into that. We'll make those, those become available in each building a week or two before the budget vote. So we'll let everybody know when those are available. And then how we're going to work the budget going forward, I think we're going to have a lot more discussion on our programs this year, instead of actually going line by line by line, where you kind of see the budget items, but you don't kind of get a feel for what the, what programs are happening, what we're doing. So what I'd like to do a little differently this year is kind of talk about a lot of these items. So we'll talk about general instruction. We'll talk about classroom. What do we have in our classrooms? What are our class sizes? What are our enrollments in our different buildings? Where do we see changes there? Our specials, what do we do in the different grade levels, from kindergarten all the way up? What additional programs do we have with the FLESS program, the STELLA programs? Talk about our pupil personnel services. As I mentioned, some of our special ed programs, the Core and the RISE programs. We have IEPs, CSEs, those are individual education plans, committees on special education, and talk about some of these acronyms that we'll hear and see, and talk about some of the services that they, they provide. Athletics, talk about the different teams that we have. How many teams do we have? How many boys teams? How many girls teams? Our after-school and special programs. We have a project-grade program. We have a Saturday ACE program. We have a community education program. We have a summer program. So we have lots of additional supporting programs that we kind of add on, which are funded by the budget, and, and great things outside of our regular instructional school day. We have technology services. We have computers. We have laptops. We have iPads. We have desktop computers. And where are we going with that? What are, what are we looking to do for this year, for next year, into the future? Transportation. We have services. We have contract buses. We have some of our own buses. We have, we provide transportation K to 12, but not everybody in the district gets transportation. So we'll talk about some of those different things. We have a changeover a lot of people don't know. In the middle school, the mileage changes from sixth grade to seventh grade. So there's always discussion, always questions about that each year. Administration. What do we do in administration? Supervisory pieces, assistant principals, guidance counselors, the accounting office, the special ed office, curriculum office. What are some of the things they do to enhance and make sure that our programs are running and operating efficiently? And support services. So again, we have security guards. We have teacher aides. What are they doing? We have cafeteria, cafeteria staff. We have bus drivers. We have different other ancillary services, support services that work throughout the district. We have clerical staff, our nursing staff. You know, lots, there's lots of additional support services that we have within the district. So I think that's where I'm going to kind of end tonight. It's really just an introduction, but I want to get into the next budget work session and kind of talk about some of these things, some of the programs that we have in the district, and kind of work from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Questions from board members?
We, one question. Do we have an idea of what our state aid will look like?
Listen, to Mike.
Can you not hear me? Sorry. Do we have an idea of what our state aid will look like this year?
We, we do. The overall state aid is probably going to be, I have it, about $10 million, a little bit more. It's going to be up a little bit from last year, about two and a half percent. I think, quite frankly, what, what we're looking at is, actually, if I take a look at it, I believe, is it going to be about 13 million?
Right around 13.
Yeah. That's, it's up a little bit, about two and a half percent from last year. The, the issue with, with, with our state aid is that governors put aside a large sum of money. We're very confident that our legislators, as you know, we have a meeting with our legislators in early March. They have a deadline of, of April 1. They get very serious about negotiations, usually in the last two weeks of March, and we're still hopeful that we will get a couple of hundred thousand dollars more. What the governor did was he said he had about $800 million of, of an increase, but in his aid runs, and I just, I was, I was looking at it a little bit before, we were just going over them again, just to make sure that the numbers that we were getting were, in fact, exactly what he has in the budget. What's interesting is that he has about $300 million that is uncommitted. So the formula aids that he has in the budget right now account for about 578 million. It's about $300 million unaccounted for, which means that essentially what he's done is he's put a lid, from the state's point of view, on how much money he will allow them to expend, but it also gives the legislators an opportunity to rerun some of the formulas and, in fact, generate more formula aid, consume a good meal, a good deal more of that $300 million, and to send redistributed to school districts. So pretty confident that there will be some additional monies that will be coming to us.
What are the chances, after they do that, they take funding away that we thought we were going to?
What's that?
What's the chances that funding could be less than what we originally were told or expected?
It's an election year. It's not going to happen. No. So, look, I, I, we're in the weeds this year because a lot of the things that our school district and other Nassau County depended on are, were expense-driven aids. We're not getting into a lot of the detail with regard to what, what is exactly happening. The governor took a lot of those expense-driven aids, which accounted for a sizable proportion of the new money that we would get each year, and pushed them into foundation aid. And even though the formulas have survived within the foundation aid for the first year, there's no commitment in year two and beyond that those formulas will survive, and in all likelihood, they will disappear, so that those expenses, which we are in control of. Just to give you an example, last week, we had Northwell, the ribbon cutting for Northwell. We negotiated with BOSI's recently for a COSER, what they call a COSER. A COSER means that it's a, an aidable expense. So the expense of $55,000 that is assignable to the Rockville Center schools for participating in that service can now be paid through BOSI's. When that happens, even though there may be a slight surcharge to that, our net cost to the school district in next, next year's budget will be about $30,000. What happens is if that gets folded into BOSI's aid, that opportunity disappears. The $55,000 becomes ours. Then we are subject, if it's, if it becomes part of foundation aid, there is no formula that is driven by expense within the, within the foundation aid formula. It is literally subject to the, the control of the, of the governor, and we do not have an opportunity to, essentially at the local level, determine what the outcome of our aid will be. We're in control of our expenses. If we can, in fact, figure out a way to get them through BOSI's, and in fact, we can derive some real benefit from the relationship that we have with the state in getting some of that money back from the state, we're in control. What we're really worried about this year is that, once that moves into the foundation aid formula, all of that opportunity disappears. So, at any rate, I'm still pretty confident, but I still think we have to make a very strong case when we get together with our legislators. I think it's March 6th. And let those voices be heard. I hope I answered your question, but get me started on that, and you know. Pardon me?
It's just the beginning.
Yes, it is. Just the beginning.
So do we have a plan moving forward? February 25th meeting is our next meeting. So on the budget presentation format slide, you mentioned a lot of things that we're going to be covering. Do we know any area or areas of focus that we're going to pay particular attention to at the next meeting? Are we breaking it?
I, I think we wanted to try to focus on the, the general instruction, pupil personnel services, those, those pieces of it.
So this is kind of the timeline, that order?
Yeah.
Because there's four more meetings before the preliminary hearing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Will our principals and administrators be with us at that meeting?
That, that largely is dependent on what the board decides. I mean, we, we can invite them to whatever board meeting we, we would like to have them attend. I think that probably the more fruitful discussion with the members of the board really have to do with the capital expenditures that we want to fold into this year's plan. I know the board is visiting all of our schools. They're having meetings with the principals, and I think, quite frankly, it would be a very good opportunity for us with them to discuss the variety of things that are happening or should happen from their perspective and yours now, since you've been meeting with them. So much of the budget that, that we have with regard to the expenditures that are normally part of the, the principal's purview, we're, we're pretty much capped, and it folds within the cap. They are very similar to what they were last year. We could later on have a discussion about some of the staffing issues, what enrollment is going to do, what enrollment looks like, whether or not we can anticipate, for example, at the elementary level. Those things, we may want to have the principals join us, but I think the more fruitful discussion in which we can ask them to participate would really to be the condition of their buildings and what we can do to use the capital line this year to improve our facilities for next. So that really doesn't answer your question. I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just...
I, I think, quite frankly, in the, in the next one, I'm not sure that the principals need to be there for that until, unless we, unless we're anticipating that that's where we're going to end up.
Right. That's kind of why I was asking. So the general instruction will be the focus, but then later on, we'll talk about capital projects, and the principals will be at that meeting? Is that the plan?
It, it, it is for us, I think, Mr. Bartels. I don't...
Yeah. I think that would be better.
Yeah. You know, when I said earlier that we started on... You know, when I said earlier that we start in October and go through December, a lot of the detail work with regard to all of the line-by-line budget is concluded. We know what the cap is. We know what the limits are that each of the principals can expend, and they've been very cooperative in working with the Mr. Bartels in keeping those limits down.
So who will present on the specials then? Is it just, you're going to, we're going to do it here?
I think we can just talk about them here.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
No.
I'm going to open the mic for questions from the public on the budget only. Come up to the mic, state your name and your address, please.
This one.
Well, actually, this one's facing us, so, yeah, this one.
Citizen taxpayer, UBA Court, alumnus of Southside, 51-year attendee at meetings of the school board, and life member of PTA. With respect to the tax cap and the 1.81%, I don't think the public fully understands in this day and age in Nassau County and the confusion over the assessment mess that has transcended multiple administrations. And it's not a Republican thing or a Democratic thing. It's been an equal opportunity mess under everybody, and the consumer confidence with respect to it is at an all-time low. So I think it's incumbent upon the school district as the only budget that we actually vote on to try to do our best to explain the process and how the 1.1 impacts us. And when you get your tax bill, it doesn't come out, whether it's residential or commercial, at 1.1. Nobody has really explained that. I have confidence in Robert Bartels' ability to explain it, but I think you should put it down on paper somewhere and explain the debits and credits, as you just told us earlier. Put it on the website and put it out above and beyond what you have to put out with respect to the obligations under state law to the taxpayers prior to the vote. The same thing applies with the pilot payments. The public of Valley Stream was very confused over that. They fired the IDA board, and in the end, it turned out that the Valley Stream School District was in error with respect to that. And one thing about the pilot is that each year it increases the payment in lieu of taxes. And I think that we should also explain that and show that, and how much more it has increased on Avalon. And Avalon is actually three separate pilots for each of the buildings. And they're not the only pilot in town, and people don't understand that either. The pilot expired on the senior citizen property at, across from the Watson School, and it was renewed by an authority, not an IDA, but the Nassau County Legislature. So we should help taxpayer confidence and consumer confidence and brag about our bond rating after last year's bad publicity we got with respect to that. And I'm also, every year I've been advocating that we have the debt service schedule as part of the document to show where we are with respect to the debt of a school district and what debt is coming off from one period of time. I, I think that's, would help people. We have a lot of smart people in this community with respect to financial backgrounds, and if they read it, maybe they can explain it to some of the seniors that don't always think kindly towards the school district and vote against the budget. The budget, I'd like to see two things included in the budget. I'd like you to improve the video in the comments room. Your video of the meeting is terrible. It's hard, it's grainy, it's amateurish, never mind the issue of, of, which I'll talk about in another meeting because it's not a budget issue with respect to taking people's words and stopping the meeting. It's just terrible. It's much better in this room. For those of you that watch the video, it's always been better in this room, and it's not good in that other room. And I'm sure there's some easy, inexpensive technological fix that we could do it. The other thing that I think we should publicize to the public is all our labor contracts, what year we're in with respect to say. And bus transportation, one of my favorite subjects, as you all recall from the past. Do we have any plans to acquire more school district buses to cut the expense from our third-party vendor in the coming year?
No.
How many buses do we now have?
We only have a handful, I think, six, but they're all small buses. We don't have any large, large buses. And those, those small buses are used mostly for special education routes in some private schools.
Well, what about for athletics afterwards? Could we, and I know the problem was where to house the buses.
Right.
Okay. I always come here and try to be a man with a plan. The former Missburg Garage on Bank Avenue, next to the pilot Avalon, is mostly vacant. It is underutilized. It can't be sold or torn down. The reason being is that the last act of Senator Potolev, the motto, was to give Nassau County a large grant to build that garage. And it is encumbered by the New, and I had this all researched by my staff at the Nassau County Planning Commission. It was encumbered with a loan and a note. If it was used for anything but other than buses and transportation, that it will, the county would have to pay back the money to the United States government. And I think the loan was somewhere in the neighborhood of $35 million. As we all know, Nassau County doesn't have 35 cents, much less $35 million, to pay back the loan. So buses would be a natural fit there. Right now, in keeping with the transportation use, they are renting out part of that building to the All Island Taxi Organization, and they store taxis there. New York City Transit has been storing buses there, and there's still plenty of room. A citizen taxpayer reported that fact to the county to make sure that we were getting revenue from that. And if we got together with the neighboring districts and put together a coalition with respect to that and funding, and the building, part of the biggest expense of the building, it's CNG gas, as opposed to fossil fuel, we're all good environmentalists. The building is equipped because the major pipeline from Ocean Avenue and Merrick Road was tapped into there and under the railroad, and there's a major infrastructure plant there with respect to CNG gas, and we could have CNG gas. It's a conversion plant that's rather costly part of the operation to power our buses. And even if a third-party vendor, we partnered with, with respect to this, our existing bus transportation provider or somebody else, it would still accrue savings to us as opposed to the diesel, the dirty diesel or gas buses that we have now. So I really think and hope that this school board would use their wisdom. And now that you're done with the search process, I want to give you another project to work on and work and maybe collaborate with some of the neighboring school districts that face similar paths with respect to that. Sometime in the future, I'd like to see that building put to better use than it is now. It is a state-of-the-art building. It started out in history as the B-line Bus Company before all the bus companies were consolidated and sold to Nassau County. And the building was totally gut renovated probably 15, 20 years ago. I've been inside. It's a, it's a, from the roof to the HVAC to all the other mechanical areas, it's a top-notch place. Next item is, I heard Dr. J explain so well the complications and the issues with respect to state aid to education. Every year, there's nobody that knows state aid to education better than Dr. J. And since our new superintendent comes from out of state, and there'll be a learning curve for you, sir, with respect to the nuances of the state aid formula, and especially since he knows all the legislative leaders and the leaders at Albany, I'd like to see you hire and put money in the budget, Dr. J, as a special budget consultant for state aid. I don't know if he's interested in that. I haven't discussed it with him, but I'd like to see the board collaborate on that. I think it would accrue to the benefit of this district for funding into the future. And the last question I have is, in the budget, how much have we budgeted for the new superintendent schools?
We have not finalized the contract, so we cannot release that information yet. We will at a future meeting, once the contract is finalized.
Also, in reading the press release in the New Jersey paper that appeared five days before the one in Newsday, from Summit, it indicated that the superintendent would be relocating to Long Island or New York. So I'm glad to hear that. In our budget, are we expending money for a relocation package?
Again, I'm not going to comment on contracts, negotiations, but we will let you know in the future.
Oh, so we, we have no contract yet?
We had put that out there to be transparent, that this is the process. You present the candidate to the public, and you approve the contract at a future meeting, and then once the contract is finalized, all those details can be released.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you got it. Thank you.
And our lawyer will be back at the next meeting?
I assume so.
I miss him already. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thanks, Kathy.
Any other budget questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
The work we know you will be doing. Okay, introducing Parent University.
Let me just jump in for one minute. You know, again, as the school district continues to kind of march forward into the future, we are always looking for ways in which we can collaborate with various entities within our community to enhance both the life of our kids in the school and also the life of our parents within this community. I really have to give a lot of praise to the PTA, who have gone way out of their way to do exactly that and to add a dimension to life in Rockville Center by working with some members of our staff and in fact providing the community an opportunity to learn and share with one another some of the wonderful things that happen both within the school district and that are available to members of this community. I know they're working with Chris. Chris, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add?
Just part of our continued partnership with PTA, also known as the Cool Moms, apparently. Apparently, I didn't know that. Thank you, Emma. So we're going to ask Donna Downing to come up and talk about Parent University, which is this February 27th, 7:30 to 9:30, up at the high school, and she's going to give us some details about what's being presented, the information being shared with our community that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Yes, I'm Donna Downing, and along with Jean Harris, we are representing the high school PTA, but along with PTA leaderships at all of our seven schools, we have coordinated this inaugural Parent University as part of these ongoing efforts to maintain a cooperative partnership between home and school. And Mr. Greenfields is correct, I would agree, that we have many smart professionals who live and work in this town, and we're happy to provide a platform for them to share that expertise. And we do appreciate the teachers, principals, and administrators for helping us coordinate this effort. It has been a true collaborative effort. So we're inviting everyone to join us the evening of Thursday, February 27th, here at the high school. We are taking advanced registrations, and you can see details on our website if you search on Google for RVC Parent University. It's a mobile-friendly site. You can check it out on your phone. And the evening will begin at 6:45 with a summer camp fair organized by SEP, which is our special education partners. They'll host representatives from summer camps for children of all abilities, and each will have a table with information for parents in the high school cafeteria. So starting at 7:30, we've organized two sessions with nine unique workshop topics. So you can select one workshop from the session one lineup and another from session two. Each will run for 50 minutes, and they'll be held in various classrooms here in the high school. So four of our workshops will run twice in both time slots, and that gives you some flexibility on what you'd like to attend. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, we have some curricular workshops, namely the Middle Years Program, or MYP, at Southside Middle School, which will provide an overview of the learner profile traits and how parents can reinforce those approaches to learning at home. Another workshop is YIB, Programs and Preparedness at Southside High School, which will explain the different options within the International Baccalaureate Program with information and answers directly from the experts who run it. Many of our workshops are aimed at parents of children of all ages. Compassionate Parenting, which seeks to help parents resolve family conflicts with empathy. Another is Raising Anti-Racists, Being Culturally Responsive, which will provide resources for parents as well as strategies to use with your children at home. Another session backed by popular demand is Worried Parents, Anxious Teens, Whose Anxiety Is It Anyway?, which we featured, it's a great response at a PTA meeting last March. Many of us need help telling the difference between typical stress and clinical anxiety or depression that requires treatment. Another workshop focuses on environmental concerns related to parenting. This will be a practical approach to help empower our kids to make simple, meaningful changes and to turn climate anxiety into action. Other workshops will answer the perennial question, how to pay for college, and another, taking the stress out of the SAT and ACT. We've also put together a panel discussion on local alternative college programs, and this will feature both the Director of the Bridges to Adelphi Program and the Experiential Academy at Malloy College. So this will explain to parents how IEP and 504 accommodations can be supported in different ways in higher education. The Experiential Academy is a program for non-traditional or vulnerable learners, and our district has a long history of inclusion and recognizing multiple intelligences. So no matter how old your child is, parents might want to think about and learn about options for the future. So we have much to choose from. We have great experts who are donating their time to present, in many cases, their life's work, their vocation or their avocation, and we encourage everyone to join us on February 27th. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's such a great addition to the school district. I know other districts have done that, and we're really impressed and proud to have our PTA running that for us. So thank you both very much for being our leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the public work session on January 22nd, 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any question, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve Board actions A through D and the addendum?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion for an executive session for specific personnel litigation matters?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned, our next meeting is a regular meeting on February 25th. Thank you.